Seventh meeting of the Alamo County School Board order. And Mr. Al Caro, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the Albemarle County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two dot two dash three seven one one A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection seven for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And subsection eight for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the Albemarle County School Board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Move by Mr. Al Caro, second by Ms. Lee, that we go into closed session. Due to all of the codes and regulations that were cited in the discussion on the motion. If not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Lee? Yes. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Al Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. So we will go into closed session.
See you over there.
See you there. It is now six thirty and we will reconvene the January twenty seventh business session for Alamo County School Board. Ms. Dale Caro, could you, do you have a motion?
I do. I moved in the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Move by Mr. Al Caro, second by Ms. Lee, that we all vote to say that the only thing that was discussed during the pub closed session were the items that were in the motion to go into closed session. Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Al Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We also have to read into our minutes with each meeting. This resolution. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically per se into Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID nineteen pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. Before we go into our moment of silence, Mr. Al Caro, could you please, when we do get to public comment, could you also read the list of public comment or people who've signed for public comment? I think it was sent in the packet. You're on mute.
No, I'm mute.
Yes, I'll look for it right now.
Okay, thank you. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now introducing the members of our board, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Good evening. It's Kate Acuff from Jack Jewett District.
Mr. John O. Al Caro.
John O. Al Caro at large.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg Whitehall District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne Scottsville District.
Our student rep, Mrs. Elizabeth Alba Ran.
Hello. From.
Good to see you. I'm Graham Page, Chair Samuel Miller District. And let's see, moving next to our agenda, could I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, move by Mr. Al Caro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? Discussion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Al Caro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve, please. Dr. Acuff.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by Dr. Acuff, second by Mr. Al Caro, that we approve the consent agenda for tonight. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Al Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda announcements and Dr. Haas will make an announcement to us, to the public.
Mr. Page, Dr. Haas has lost his internet. This is Debbie Collins Deputy Superintendent. He'll be back on with us as soon as he can.
Okay. All right, moving next to, we'll come back to the announcements then. So our next item, public comment. Mr. Al Caro, were you able to pull up that document?
I have.
Okay, thank you.
We invite and actively seek the public's input into the matters relevant to school board governance and provide for time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on topic comments. Disrupted behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance cannot be tolerated. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with the clerk. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue comment after three minutes. And if you, if the speakers watch me, I'll hold up my finger when we get to the two minute mark. And let's see, I haven't done this in a while. And I think that debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed. And we'll take it from there. We have elevens, I beg from, we have ten speakers tonight. The first three will be Kelly Washington, then Sarah Harris, then Mary Nacy. And let me come back onto the Zoom. And so, Ms. Washington, are you with us?
I am.
Please, go right ahead.
My name is Kelly Elizabeth Barris, Washington. I'm representing the part of the Rio District. I'm a member of the Susay Marie Tribe of Chipewa Indians, and I'm speaking on behalf of my children. Native Americans have been the recipient of more abuse and false promises from the American government than any other culture in the two hundred and forty-four years of America's history. Forgive me if I am predisposed not to trust my children's welfare to the whims of the school board and administration empowered by that government. That being said, I'm not here to talk about masks or quarantine or any of the other issues plaguing our students because the governor and the attorney general have that well on hand and it won't be long until it's over. But I'd like to focus on tonight to get to the root of our local problem and propose that we recall the entire school board. You continue to refuse to meet with us in person, unlike most other Virginia counties, including Flavanna, Culpeper, and Loudon, to name a few. I'm tired of all of you hiding behind your computer screens. We want the opportunity to encourage each other in person and to be able to look you in the face and know that you're actually listening to us. Don't mute me. There will be a quiz at the end and definitely a petition. You had no problem putting elderly at-risk school bus drivers on the front lines in the fall of 2020 when you forced them to go out and deliver school lunches. They had no option to work from home, unlike all of you. Long before there was a vaccine and before we had a full understanding of the dangers being faced, you put them face to face with students. And yet you won't meet face to face with us with your vaccines, masks, face shields, and social distancing. I was told by Phil Giarmi that the school board doesn't have permission to use the county office building. Sure, okay. I understand that part may be out of your hands, but surely you can grant yourselves permission to use one of the school auditoriums if you really want to meet us in person, but you don't. I mean, if we can put seventy kids on a school bus, surely we can put seventy adults in an auditorium. And while we are at it, we can even magically reduce the COVID contact trace to three feet like they do on the buses. If you can change the rules to meet your needs, you can change them to accommodate your constituents. Apparently, these meetings being Zoom meetings multiplied attendance by the hundreds, and that's wonderful. There's no reason to stop. But that is also no reason for you not to show up and do your job in person. You expect teachers, bus drivers, and custodians to come to work every day, so I expect you to be at work one day a month where you're supposed to be there. I worked the entire pandemic. I never stopped. My husband and I delivered food to people I hear were afraid to leave their homes, people sheltering in place. We didn't have the luxury to stay at home because we had to keep our business open so we could survive. The school board and administrators are no better than we are, and they should have to go to work just like everybody else. Don't worry, though. If we do succeed in replacing all of you, I heard the Transportation Department is desperately in need of school bus drivers. Thank you for listening and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Next up is, sorry, I was jumping back and forth between screens, Sarah Harris, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Thank you. I live in the Whitehall District, and I wanted to thank you for continuing to uphold the masking policy, given our current rate of community transmission. I was going to cite statistics about how relying on vaccinations is the primary mitigation strategy is inherently inequitable, given the fact that many people remain unvaccinated or undervaccinated for reasons that have nothing to do with choice. I can remind you that COVID nineteen disproportionately impacts black, brown, immunocompromised, and low-income families and families without the ability to work remotely, much more significantly than white or affluent families, families who aren't already dealing with significant health challenges, and families with flexible work options. In the absence of readily available and accessible testing opportunities, masking remains our most equitable mitigation strategy to limit the spread of COVID nineteen and to keep schools open. To be clear, I share the urgency to return to normal. I recognize that declining mental health among children and teens is a major concern, but there are many factors that have contributed to student mental health decline, and masks are not one of them. There's a loss of normalcy, yes, but also the literal loss of loved ones and family income disruption and loss of social interaction, and endless anxiety over all the different ways COVID has or could impact their lives. There has been fear, and not just fear of COVID. In our county, in one semester alone, there have been multiple social media threats that have led to lockdowns and arrests. That's traumatic for children and teens. Active shooter drills, divisive politics, the existential threat to our democracy, world leaders inability to take substantive action to combat the climate crisis, angry parents yelling at school board members or suing school divisions over a curriculum that includes fact-based history lessons and policies that make schools more inclusive of all students. What are we doing? Mask wearing is not the problem, and fear is not ruling our lives, but compassion should. We want our community to be healthy. We want our children to learn the truth. We want our kids to be safe. We want our kids to care about each other. And everyone wants our kids to be in school. So masking for now is a way to keep our schools open, and it's also how we show our neighbors and especially our healthcare workers that we care. It's literally the least we can do for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next up is Mary Nacy. Ms. Nacy?
Yes, hello. My name is Mary Nacy. I also live in the Whitehall District, and I am happy to be able to speak to you to express my appreciation to you, the whole school board, the administration, everybody, for upholding the current masking guidelines. Like everyone, I would be delighted for things to go back to COVID, pre-COVID normal. But we recognize that we aren't there yet. I have four children. I have one at Western, one at Henley, and one at Brownsville. That's a lot of contact that they're having with a lot of people during the day. And my youngest is in preschool, and he just turned five over winter break. And since he was a year old, he has had a history of asthma that has required hospitalization from time to time. Luckily, he didn't get very sick with anything during the pandemic, and we really haven't had to worry about it. But as the older ones went back to school and he was unable to be vaccinated, every day felt like a game of chicken between them, my older kids getting back to normal, and the health of my younger one. And masking seems like the least possible thing that we can do for people in my situation who have unvaccinated people at home. Thankfully, now he's vaccinated. He had his second dose last week, so in two weeks from now, hopefully, we'll be a step closer. But that's a new development, and it is terrifying to think of what would have happened if that had not happened before everything with masking came up. So I am so grateful that everybody on the board recognizes that this is the least that we can do, adhere to these safety protocols to protect our entire community, not just the little ones that we're entrusted with every day, but their families and their neighbors and their friends. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nacy. And next, the next three speakers will be Tim Hickey, Sarah Lepore, and Lily Bennett. Mr. Hickey? Are you with us?
I'm here.
Great. Please, go right ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Haas, members of the board and everybody on the call. It's good to see you. I'm a parent in Samuel Miller District of two kids who attend the Albemarle County Public Schools. I was also an employee, a teacher with the schools for eleven of my seventeen years as a teacher. And I'm speaking tonight as a parent to express gratitude to the members of the board and to all the employees in the schools. And I want to say I love seeing student representation on the school board. That's very cool. To the board members, thank you for everything that you do for our kids. Every day, I know it can be a thankless job sometimes. Most recently, I want to thank you for following Virginia Law SB thirteen oh three, the CDC guidelines, and our pediatricians, the Virginia Chapter for the American Academy on Pediatrics on masks. This is gonna give us the best shot at keeping our school buildings open. It gives us the best shot at keeping our staff and students and their families safe. And it also allows us to recruit and retain the best in the business because people can see that you're making common sense decisions and that you care about your employees. So thank you. To any parents that are watching, you know, I invite you to join me in expressing gratitude to all the people who work for our schools. It's been a tough couple of years. I did, I was in charge of virtual school for my kids. And I know it's been tough for parents, and it's been tough for staff, too. So just, you know, I invite you to share a short email, a call, a note, a quick conversation to express some grace and gratitude to the people who do the work. And I'm talking about the school bus drivers who are the first ones to see our kids in the morning and the last in the afternoon, the cafeteria staff who prepare meals for our children, the teachers in the teacher's age who inspire a love of learning in our kids and teach them to think critically about tough, weighty issues. The front office staff were fantastic in interacting with the families. The administrators, the custodial staff who give the kids a sense of pride in learning in a clean and safe environment. The counselors, on and on. Let's thank them. In closing, I just want to say that my sons love attending Albemarle County Schools. They feel safe. They feel supported, and they feel loved. So my message is keep doing what you're doing, and this community will have your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Ms. Lepore? I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. First of all, I would also like to thank the school board, administrators, teachers for your continued support to provide an inclusive, equitable, and truthful education to our communities in Albemarle County. My name is Sarah Lepore. I'm a nurse practitioner and a mother of children attending the Western feeder schools, including a fourth grader who is autistic and has two rare genetic disorders. I am here today to urge you to continue to follow the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation and the CDC guidelines on COVID policies, which include universal masking indoors for all students and staff. While I agree that we eventually need to consider an off-ramp for COVID mitigation steps, now is not the time to lower our guard. Instead, we should be focusing on obtaining better masks for students and teachers in order to limit the spread and keep kids in school. Already this week, my middle schooler had two teachers out and multiple classmates. Without masking, there will be many more absences and lost instruction time. I believe the goal should be to limit the disruption from in-person school, and the best way to do this is to continue masking as well as continue the entire COVID mitigation plan. I ask that you focus on listening to experts like the entire AAP and CDC and only decrease COVID mitigation when our community spread is much lower and positivity rates have decreased. I also ask you to not allow the politicization of masking to influence your decisions. Positivity rates remain high, and the vulnerable population is very much part of our community. This includes my child, many other children that attended the schools, some of our county's teachers, administrators, and ancillary staff. Reasonable precautions like getting vaccinated, wearing better masks, and improved ventilation and filtration are not draconian measures at this point in time and will help to keep our students and teachers safe. Preventing people from getting sick is the most helpful strategy to keeping schools open and keeping students and teachers in school. Right now, we need every strategy to make that happen. As you know, our local hospitals are seeing record number of COVID patients, and nursing and medical staff are exhausted and understaffed. It is not the time to change guidelines that potentially could compromise our healthcare system. You may have heard the term focused protection recently. Focus protection means healthy children can go back to normal while those at risk either wear N ninety-fives or worse, stay home. The concept of focused protection is not an equitable choice. It does not actually protect the vulnerable population. And last I checked, there's not a child-sized N ninety-five manufactured in the U.S. at this time. What do you think could happen when only the vulnerable kids and at-risk teachers are asked to wear masks to protect themselves while everybody else does not have to? I believe the risk of highlighting who is vulnerable in an already stressed situation could possibly lead to negative behavior, like maybe an increase in bullying. It will be harder for kids to do the right thing when their peers aren't having to wear masks. We must never consider following a policy recommending significantly at-risk kids to stay home during increased community transmission.
Ms. Lepore, your time is up. I'm sorry, which time, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Ms. Bennett.
Hi, I'm Lily Bennett. I'm a parent in the Scottsville District. And I also want to express my appreciation to the school board and staff, teachers, bus drivers, everyone for doing what they can to keep our kids in schools safe the last two years. The last couple of years have been a real struggle, but for many people like me and my family, we were all able to get vaccinated, and it felt like things were starting to get back to normal, and we all want that so badly. But we've got to acknowledge that we're just not there yet. There are still many people in our community who are extremely vulnerable to the virus as they have been from the beginning. Nothing has changed for them, and some of them are kids and staff at our schools. They're people we live with and go home to and people we work with. And they do not have a choice in the matter. I believe it's our moral obligation to do everything we can to protect the most vulnerable people in our community. I think politicizing public health policy like masking that is scientifically proven to work is shameful and forcing our kids and teachers to deal with the controversy within the classroom where the focus should obviously be on learning is sad, and it doesn't serve anyone well. I believe following CDC and our local health districts guidelines at this time is the most reasonable way to prevent the spread of COVID in and outside of our schools. And I appreciate you for continuing to follow them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Our next speakers, there will be, there are four left, and they'll go in the order of Anna Scholl, Marsh Patty, Allison Lyons, and Heidi Gilman Bennett. Ms. Scholl, are you ready?
Yes, thank you so much. And hello, my name is Anna Scholl, and I am a second grade parent in the Rio District. And I wanted to take a moment today to thank you all for keeping strong COVID mitigation policies in place in our schools, including the masking requirement. Because while I do have a child in second grade, I also have a three-year-old who is currently not eligible to be vaccinated. The school mask requirement helps us make sure that our daughter can be in school learning while our son's health is protected. And I am incredibly grateful to you all for not forcing our family to choose between one child's education and another child's health. But even if that wasn't our situation, we would still support keeping masks in place for now. We teach our kids that their choices and actions have consequences. Wearing a mask isn't just an individual choice. It has consequences for the people, the kids, the teachers around you. Our schools are helping our children learn to be good citizens, to consider the impact of their actions on the people around them. My daughter understands that she wears a mask not just to keep her little brother safe, but to be compassionate and considerate of the people in our community. That includes her friends, teachers, and school staff who have health conditions themselves or vulnerable family members at home. And we keep wearing masks to respect the work and sacrifice of the healthcare workers who are struggling through incredibly long hours in the midst of another COVID surge. We are all eager to be done with COVID and put the pandemic behind us, but the reality is just that we're not there yet. And we've all got to come together for a little while longer to stop the spread of this disease and keep each other safe. So thank you all for doing your part to help us keep our kids and community safe and to get to the other side.
Thank you, Ms. Scholl. Mr. Patty, you're up next.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I hope everyone is well. My name is Marsh Patty and from the Whitehall District. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to say a few words this evening as a parent of a Henley and Brownsville student. First, I want to communicate my gratitude for pausing the Henry, the Henley Advisory Pilot that created so much division last year. I truly appreciate that it is under review and hope that it will be brought into compliance with Governor Yonkin's executive order number one. My wife and I are grateful for the governor's executive order and respectfully ask that you please work in good faith with the new state superintendent of public instruction. and respectfully ask that you please work in good faith with the new state superintendent of public instruction to review and remove divisive and partisan curricula from our schools. Second, we also encourage you to please focus renewed attention on the learning loss of our children. Students have already lost so much instructional time due to the pandemic and we've lost so many days due to weather this month alone. We do understand that you have, I think it is nine bank days that prevent a need to make up an equivalent number of snow days. In ordinary times, I agree that would be a great approach and a great strategy, but these are not unfortunately ordinary times. Like Charlottesville, I'm hoping that you'll find days and ways to be able to make up the instructional time. Our teachers, I think, need that, just as they need and deserve higher pay for the great work that they do. Our children certainly need that as well. Please do focus more on instructional time as well as academic rigor, the high standards and merit that we all seek, creating equal opportunities for all of our kids and helping our kids develop resilience to face adversity. And please let us as parents help you in that endeavor. We're willing to work with you. In the end, we all want our children to be competitive for college, the job market, or whatever path they might choose. We want to help you prepare the child, our children, for the road, but not the road for the child. It will not serve them well in the end. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patty. Ms. Lyons, you're up next.
Hi, it's actually Dr. Lyons.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Lyons.
My name is Allison Lyons. I'm a parent of two children in the Whitehall district. Both go to Brownsville. I'm also a general internist as well. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. First, I want to express my appreciation for the school board and all of the teachers and administrators at A C P S. It's been an unprecedented time over the past two years and I really want to express my appreciation for all that you have done to support the teachers and the students and the staff, especially to keep our schools safe and have everybody return to in-person school over the past year in a safe setting and try to protect all of our students. Specifically, my son, my older son has leukemia. He's been fighting leukemia for over the past three years and underwent a bone marrow transplant this past year. And I really want to express appreciation for how much Brownsville has done for him to keep him safe over the past three years and keep his brother safe in order to not transmit COVID to him prior to going through his bone marrow transplant. But I think the important thing to keep in mind as we keep these vulnerable populations safe is that we want to make sure that we keep our high-risk of patients and students safe. And we don't, we need to think about this equitably because it's not just students who have comorbid illnesses. It's also students who have parents at home who might have comorbid illnesses. It's also students who might have increased difficulty accessing care. And if we, if we change our policies without thinking about it ahead of time, we could actually kind of provide unequitable care to our students and kind of shortchange them. So I think we need to think kind of critically about what we do if we end up changing our policies ahead of time. So I think I really want to express appreciation for how you've addressed EO two. And just want to kind of how thoughtfully you have gone about protecting our students over the past two years because I really greatly appreciate how well you've protected my son. I also want to appreciate how well you've taught diversity and history and I hope that you guys continue to kind of think about the diversity curriculum in terms of how you teach it within our schools to make sure that they're prepared for facing the greater world going forward. Because I think it's really important that we prepare our children to really be aware of different cultural backgrounds other than our own so that when they go to college or go to graduate school, they're fully prepared. And I'm not sure if EO one will really prepare us for that. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Perfect timing, Dr. Lyons. Thank you for your comments. Next up is Heidi Gilman Bennett. Ms. Bennett?
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Heidi Gilman Bennett. I'm in the Samuel Miller district. I have two kids in the school system, one at Western and one at the Community Lab School. I'm showing up tonight with the simple message of thanks. For the past week, I've had this non-word stuck in my head, all the moral. And it's stuck there because the A C P S mission is really to help all students thrive. And I see that all of you in A C P S have been working so hard to achieve this during incredibly difficult times. So tonight, I really just want to share how much we, parents and families, appreciate all that you're doing. So first of all, thank you to you school board members. During a difficult time when it feels like public education itself is under assault, you've put in way more time and energy than I'm sure you thought you'd signed up for. And thank you for supporting the policies like the continued masking, at least for now, that are keeping our community safe. I also want to thank the principals and A C P S leaders, Dr. Haas and others who are on the call, not only for doing your jobs, but for serving in classrooms and on the bus lines and keeping our schools open. It's amazing. I want to thank the school nurses who have been great for putting themselves at daily risk to preserve the whole county's health. Our bus drivers are amazing. They're so lovely. They're getting our kids to school safely, including up and down some really steep, icy, narrow roads in my neighborhood at least. And I want to really say how much I appreciate the bus driver, I'm sorry, the substitutes. Because I know that they're showing up to classrooms where they know they've been, there have been positive COVID cases and they're still there and they're keeping the schools open. And I have to send a call out to the school counselors for helping kids like mine who are struggling not only with physical illnesses, but also mental health issues and no surprise, related academic issues. And also to the counselors who are helping us parents who are really frankly sick with worry about pretty much everything these days. But most of all, I want to thank the teachers because not only in the face of the pandemic, but also in the face of so much criticism and even scary political threats. They are all continuing to teach and inspire my kids. There are amazingly wonderful things happening in my kids' classrooms and I just want teachers so much to know that the families of A C P S really support you. And that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, very much. And thank you to all of our speakers for their public comment. With that, Mr. Page, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dale Carroll, for filling in that duty this afternoon, or this evening. Thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Haas is online, I think, again now. So we'll be back for his announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I apologize. I really don't know what happened. I'm just here in the county office building and my internet just went out briefly. So thank you for giving me a few minutes. I just had a couple of quick announcements. One, I really want to thank Baker Butler for hosting me last week for a school visit. I got there on a two-hour delay. I got to see all their hands on deck greeting students as they were getting off the school buses and getting out of their, their family's cars. They had quite an ingenious route to route all the cars back around behind the building and bring them up to the front so they could stay off of Prophet Road. And just saw a great staff at the school, visited classrooms, and I really felt a great team environment at Baker Butler. That is very special and I know it typifies the, the work that goes on at all of our schools. So thank you very much to, to the staff of Baker Butler. I also want to thank Monticello High School for having me to visit as a substitute last week. I substituted on Friday for AP Psychology and Government. Great kids, super smart, very sharp, and made it easy to be a substitute for the day. And I had a great time at Monticello, very positive environment at the school, everybody pitching in to make things go well for kids and I really appreciate it. We have several principals at the meeting tonight. Seda Deloria, Ashby Johnson, Wadette Crummy, Cassandra Blunt, Mike Ironi, Cindy Wells, and Rick Bahovak. And I want to thank all of you for joining us at the school board meeting tonight. And if you want to turn on your cameras briefly so we could see you and just say thank you to all of you for the great work that you're doing and for hanging out with us a little bit tonight. A lot of the things that are reflected in the HR annual report reflect the really hard work that you do to recruit and, and develop and retain all of our employees with the success that you do. So thank you. I'm gonna just take a timeout here. I did have a board member prior to the meeting ask if we could give a quick update on how many banked hours we still have remaining after the snow days that we had. So I was going to ask Dr. McLaughlin to step in and give us an update on that, if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Dr. Haas, and good evening, board members. Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And as I'm sure all of you are as well, you're been monitoring the weather in the days that we've missed. And when we changed our calendar to add some additional teacher workdays in, we started using a calendar that followed clock hours instead of school days. Virginia code requires us to be in school either nine hundred and ninety hours over the course of the school year or a hundred and eighty days. And so when we take into account all of the inclement weather days we've missed, and if you recall, we had one in the spring for flooding and then most recently the days for snow and early, I'm sorry, a late arrival. We've still got, we've got ten hours banked still. So that's about one and two-thirds days. We have a six-hour day at our shortest schools. So staff is, you know, concerned that that is getting close to the minimum threshold. We certainly don't want to get too much closer to that. And so we are looking at potential options. If the board recalls, one of the things we had talked about when we did add the the teacher workdays in was that some of those may have to come back if we got hit with a lot of inclement weather. So we are looking at that, looking at any other weather events that may be on the horizon and hopefully should have some updated information soon as to what we may need to do to make sure we stay well above that threshold.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Right, thank you, Dr. Haas and Dr. McLaughlin. And also thanks to our principals, Ms. Blunt, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Ronnie, Ms. Crummy, Ms. Wells, and Ms. Deloria for being with us tonight. We appreciate having you in our midst tonight. So thank you all for being here. Our next item on the agenda is the, one of the main focuses for tonight's, tonight's work session, unpacking the Human Resources Annual Report. And Dr. Kazza is going to lead off this portion of the meeting. Dr. Kazza.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to quickly get the slide deck up and we will be ready to go. Good evening, school board members and others that are here with us tonight. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. And I'm here tonight with some of the key leaders from our human resources team. With me tonight is Mr. Dan Redding, our Director of Human Resources, Dr. Daphne Kaiser, our Director of Educated Quality, and Mr. Brody Downs, our Assistant Director of Human Resources. Tonight, we'll take some time to unpack the Human Resources Annual Report. This report serves as a retrospective, allowing us to look back at some of the accomplishments and some of the challenges of the department's work in the prior year in order to support all of our employees. It also helps us better understand and identify the needs and the goals that we will set going forward. It acts as a barometer to help us, it acts as a barometer as a means for us to gain a better understanding of the health and the needs of our workforce. As a reminder, the third goal of our strategic plan focuses on equitable and transformative resources. With the first objective, Albemarle County will attract, develop, and retain the highest quality staff. That right there, as well as the strategies to support that, really encompasses the work of the Human Resources Team. The Human Resources Group focuses on our school division's needs and efforts through recruitment, hiring, retention, compensation and benefits, wellness and safety, and learning. And while we have a vision, mission, and core values specifically for HR, when you look at that mission, working as strategic partners, supporting organizational goals and helping employees with all phases of their Albemarle County careers, you really see that alignment to the strategic plan and the overall work of the School Division as a whole. Through tonight's work session, we are going to really give you the opportunity to unpack the Human Resources Annual Report. We know that you've had the opportunity to read the report, but tonight you'll have the opportunity to dig a little bit deeper into specific parts of it. In a few moments, you'll be broken into three groups. Each group will have one of the Human Resources leaders as a facilitator and they will guide you through a protocol that will allow for a deeper understanding of the sections of the report. A discussion will follow the structured protocol and each group will go through two rounds in order to focus on the topics that you see here. Through the first rotation, you will see that each group will focus on recruitment, selection, and retention of our, of our employees with one group both focusing on our classified employees, one on our administrators, and one on our teachers. In the latter round, you'll see a breakdown of some of the other functions of Human Resources focusing on benefits and compensation, recognition, and engagement, departmental efforts, and some things that we're thinking about going forward, and wellness and safety and some professional development through the lens of that in the world of human resources. The protocol you see here is something that your, that your leaders will take you through. It allows you to go step by step through the text. It allows you to deep dig deeper into three levels of the text where you really first look at the, the text through that literal understanding. The, in, in the second level, you will think about the, your interpretation of the text. And that level three really gets us into an opportunity to really think about the implications for our work and, and, and the work that we do and the work that we will continue to do. You'll be in your breakout rooms for about an hour. The first forty-five minutes will be going through the protocol and that will be followed up by a discussion within your breakout groups. And then we'll come back and have a little bit of a wrap-up with the groups altogether. So with that, I, I'm delighted that you're here with us tonight so that we can share this report with you. And Ms. Johnson, you can go ahead and put us in our rooms.
All right, Dr. Kaiser, has everyone made it to their breakout rooms?
It looks like we are all set.
Looks like we're there. All right. Good evening, board members. I believe Board Member Page and Board Member Alcaro. Thank you for being with us tonight. So we'll be engaging in this three levels of text protocol. And if you'll bear with me for one moment, I'm gonna just put that slide back up on the screen. All right. And share screen. And let's make it a little bit bigger for you. That's the wrong button. I apologize. Slideshow presenter view. There we go. I think I'm still on the wrong button. I'm sorry.
That works. I think you're good.
Now we're good. All right. So we're going to go through this protocol and in this, we'll take the first five minutes and you'll read the first section of the reports to yourself. And that's the recruitment, selection, and retention for classified staff. It's pages twenty-two through thirty of the report. We'll each read that silently. I'll set a timer. And then while you're reading that, look for something that stands out to you that you'll want to talk with the group in this breakout about. Each board member will have three minutes to read that section, that part of the passage aloud. Each board member will have three minutes to read that section, that part of the passage aloud, and then share their thoughts and interpretation about that part of the passage and what that might have as implications for the work of HR. And then in the last two minutes, we can respond to what, what was shared. We'll repeat that for the same selection for the other board member. And then we'll go to the second section, which is Compensation and Benefits. Any questions about the protocol?
All right, I don't, the reading material right offhand, was it in our packet? Because right offhand, I don't have it available.
I believe it was in your packet and yes, it would be the HR Annual Report.
I'll go ahead and do the, put the link into the chat so that you can have that there as well.
Yes, it was emailed as well.
Okay. And it's pages 23 through 30 that we're working on now?
Yes, so it starts on a page that has a picture of children leaving the bus stop and it's titled Classified Staff, Recruitment and Selection. So I'll set a timer for five minutes and we can go ahead and read that section. And remember, you're looking for a section to respond to in this breakout room. All right. We'll go ahead and start the timer.
Okay, I'm having problems with getting to that place, my minute. Opening the document.
Mr. Page, you may need to log into the website to be able to access that.
Okay.
I'm gonna do some work to see if I can get you an easier copy there.
See any way to do it? Claire?
I'm trying to get it to PDF.
Sorry that I didn't download it, I guess, from the packet.
Dr. Kaiser, I'm sending a PDF to you.
Thank you. Mr. Page, I think the easiest thing will be, I'm gonna just forward this on to you.
Okay.
Come through email.
All right, because now to get it and still stay in Zoom is gonna be a problem. Right?
I'm opening the email attachment. It should just open the PDF file on top if it works the way we expect, I hope.
All right.
It may overlap the screen for a little bit while you're looking at it.
Okay, there's no problem.
But that's fine.
Okay.
That's why we have Mr. Redding here to walk us through it.
Okay, again, I guess I should have really opened the document ahead of time. But when I looked at my, you know, looked at this, I didn't realize that. Okay. Or Dan, should it have come?
I believe Claire was forwarding it to you. It should be in your email.
Should be in your email, yes.
I forwarded to you as well, Mr. Page.
Yes.
Okay, so would I have to go to my email to get it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see. Well, I'll have to leave, I guess, Zoom and then come back, right?
You shouldn't have to.
Be able to open your email up, whether it's in another browser tab or if it's a separate mail application. You should be able to open it though in a separate browser window.
Okay, I don't think I'm able to do that. I don't see that.
Do you open usually a mail application or do you open your email through the browser tab?
Yeah, through the browser tab, and I can't get back to it right now.
Hitting the escape button, that should take you back. That should minimize the Zoom screen and maybe allow you to see the browser tabs.
Okay, let me see. Okay, that didn't do anything because I don't think I'm using the right button here. Let's see, wait a minute.
Or if you're in full screen on Zoom, if you go out of the full screen, that also may help you.
All right. Okay, well, let's see, I'm gonna wait a minute.
Did that help? By stopping sharing, sometimes that minimizes the window.
Okay, yeah, but I still not able to open the document and Jono has finished reading, I guess. There, let me see.
Can we just open the document on the screen for him?
Oh, yeah. I can pull that up here.
Get it.
There we go. I've got it.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you see it, Mr. Page?
All right, listen, now I'm back in my mail, but let's see if I can see it now. Hold on. Yeah, okay. Right.
We're on the classified staff here.
Yes.
All right, start with this page. Just tell me when you're ready for me to move forward.
Okay, all right. And let's see now, if you could make it a little bit larger. Sorry about this. I'm gonna see, wait, okay, I'm making it larger, but I don't think I can move it. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Just tell me when to move down. And you can just skim for this one.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, move. Okay.
I'll just scroll through here. Make it a little bit smaller so you can see.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay.
This one's a little hard to see on the screen because the numbers are small, but it is, does have our five-year trends for our classified staff.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Redding, I'm gonna leave this up on the screen so if you, you can just take them through the protocol.
Absolutely. All right. So with the first part of the protocol, then each board member should identify something that stood out to them in the report and take a moment and maybe read that section out loud, share their thoughts about that passage, their interpretations and the connections they're making to their experience with the School Division and then implications of our work. So if we could start with Mr. Alcaro, if you found a selection, I'll go ahead and start your three minutes.
Mr. Redding, if I could, I'd just like to make a comment at the beginning that, you know, I'm so glad we got this. I mean, I'm, I'm, I was very focused on teachers. I was very focused on administrators. But classified staff is one of those important groups, you know, in our schools and our, in our buildings. And they mean so much to our students. And so the, the import of them is, 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 is just stands out to me every single year. The things, the things that, that grabbed me in here were the retention rate. And I see that the retention rate is kind of steady in the 70, 70 to 80%. But I think that's the still 24% departure rate is high. And I'm noticing that the retirements have jumped up each of the last three years. And so we're now, we're five, five percentage points above where we were back in 1718. And I'd love to know some of the, the reasons behind it. I mean, I saw in here that through exit surveys, the main reasons for leaving the, the job was personal, moving from the area. Retirement, 13% just seems like a big number. And I'm not, I'm not saying that people shouldn't be retiring when they're wanting to retire. You know, but I, I wonder if there are some retirements that, that people are doing that might be a little bit early. And, but obviously the one that I think you all are probably paying attention to is the third one with the job-related issues. Dissatisfaction with policies, practices, et cetera. And so for a group that is so important to our everyday existence and, and, and the well-being of our students, those are, those are the, the three things, whether it's the retention rate, the retirement rate, and the factors for that were given during the exit surveys.
Thank you.
Did I hit three minutes?
You're, you're well under, actually. What, what kinds of implications might you see in the work of HR based on, on that thinking?
Well, I, I think it's, it's, and by the way, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with, with the new HR, you know, situation. And I think it allows to dig deeper into some of these things that, that in the past, and no negative to the past, I'm not saying that. They may not have had the opportunity to really get down into dealing more closely with all of our employees, you know, and specifically in this case, the classified staff. And I don't know if, if you are, you're gonna be having more and more people going out into the field, you know, to talk and have, you know, meetings in schools and other buildings to sit down and talk with the nurses and the, and the and the food services people. But I, I, I think it's it's much as, along the lines of, we want to know and we want to see each one of our students in our schools and there being a relationship. And I want to make sure that we are seeing each of our employees, no matter what, what role they have. And so given that we're just focused on classified, you know, I just want to make sure that, that they're being seen, they're being listened to, they're being given an opportunity to vent in a, in a, in a safe environment. And that they're not worried about, you know, losing their job, over expressing frustration.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Page, any response to what you heard from, from Mr. Alcaro?
I agree with what, you know, everything that he is saying. And let's see, I was trying to pull it. I did pull it up a little so that I could see that. Let's see now, with the classified employees. So what, we had 320, 323 new hires for classified, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, but also looking at the retirement, and I think Jono might have mentioned this too. Right now, but it's showing 49 retirees and is that for? But so far this school?
All of this data is for the previous school year.
Okay, okay. Because I guess with everything that's going on with the, the mask policy and all of the other sort of it's the best word to use, maybe things that have sort of created some problems for some of our teachers. I'm really concerned about whether or not, how many teachers we might be losing, you know, this school year or at the end of the school year due to some of the turmoil, you know, some of the things that we really couldn't control, I don't guess, but still the effects that that's had on some of our teachers and some of our staff. And so that would be one of my main concerns to try to make sure that, you know, we are working as hard as possible to sort of address some of the problems that we know that our teachers might be facing right now, and not only teachers, but all of our staff. Does that sort of make sense? And it's, does that sort of fall in line with what? Does that sort of make sense? And that's does that sort of fall in line with what?
Yeah, any any thoughts you had related to Mr. Alcaro's reflections? And then we can move into a passage that you want to respond to and share reflections on.
Okay, all right. All right, that was sort of a combination of the two, because I guess not having had a chance to read this in as much detail as I wanted to. Because I guess when I looked at the the agenda the other day, it may not have been loaded at that point. Or either I didn't get a chance to look at it and
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I know. So yeah, I'm not, you know, blaming anybody except for myself. Yeah. But right now, that would be maybe the main thing, I guess. Okay. But you know, the section that I would like to you know, really focus on or that really does grab my attention would be the the retirement portion just for the reasons that I say us stated before. And looking at the graph even on this is sort of moving into something else, too, maybe not not anything to read. But even with the classified staff distribution. Okay, that's sort of interesting.
Are you talking about the age distribution of our classified? Yeah.
Right. Okay.
What what might you see for the implications of HR's work based on the concerns you've shared around or the reflections you shared around turnover and retention as well as some of that distribution of our classified staff?
I guess one thing that I hope that our new expire and expanded HR department would be would be to try to address some of the issues, you know, like having, I'm not sure how it could be done, but maybe having some way of like training or but um maybe even counseling sessions for for our employees who might really be becoming depressed or suffering depression because of some of the issues that we have been forced to to face this year. So maybe having some type of counseling available for for those employees.
Okay, if I could throw one thing in there, too, is that I think when when we get into compensation, you know, we we were able to do the four percent, which is the highest increase in in the number of years last year. And and I think we need to continue because of competition. I mean, we raise, you know, salaries for a lot of people up to the fifteen dollar level. But they still are, there are still people above that who are in need and looking at other opportunities that are going to pay them, you know, even higher. And I think that, Mr. Redding, that as we go into the budget season, your thoughts and your team's thoughts on what would be attractive enough, you know, to to keep, you know, some of of more of these people. I understand that we're going through. You know, there are some physicians, nurses are one, that are a particular group that is facing competition, we're facing competition for them from a a financial point of view.
Right.
How do we address that? You know, what, you know, I mean, I I would turn to you and your team to to give us some guidance. And and so and and I don't want to be separating groups out. And at the same time, I don't know that we can categorize them all the same. Right. And so, you know, guidance in in that area and and there are others. I don't have that list right in front of me. I think that's something we could really get help from from your team for this year's budgeting and and the future.
Absolutely. And and that moves us into our second section of the report that we'll look at this evening, which is yes, absolutely.
I guess even in when we're thinking about the budget, even like with the nurses that John O just mentioned, what the chief competition would be, and you know, it would have to be probably U B N Centaur, basically. But you know how we would compare in compensation compared to those two main employees that would probably be able to draw away some of our nurses.
Yeah.
You know, and to that point, Graham, I think one of the things that would be important for for all of our folks, including the nurses, to be asked is what's important to you? What what keeps you here?
Yeah.
Because it may not, in some cases, be money. It may be other things. And you know, it's not just money that motivates everybody.
Right, that's fair. Yep. All right, that that really is bringing us to our second part of the report that our breakout group will look at tonight. And that is the section on compensation and benefits, recognition and engagement. So some of those other things that do attract and retain employees. That section of the report is pages thirty one through thirty five. So it follows the section we just looked at. The page has exit surveys on the left side. That's part of the classified staff section and compensation on the right. So let's take about five minutes. And again, you're looking for a section within that part of the report that you'll want to respond to as we did with the previous section. So go ahead and give those couple of pages thirty one through thirty five a quick read right now. We've got about two minutes for this part. And try to wrap your reading and identify what passage you might want to reflect and respond on. So we've got about twenty seconds. And Mr. Page, if we can start with you this time.
Okay.
With what passage stood out to you, if you want to share about that section or read any of it?
Okay, the benefits section stood out to me. And some of the programs that were sort of, you know, highlighted that we offer as benefits to our staff. And let's see now, one or two of them were pretty, pretty nice. Holding the medical dental premium rate steady for another plan year and also a two month employee rate holiday. Those would be things I think that would be really good and nice. Good benefits for our employees. In that same section, continued response to the COVID related leave program. And associated optional benefits or extensions rather. So a question on that part. What were, what are some of the things involved in that that section in that, you know, in that portion?
In in terms of the COVID leaves?
Yes, right.
So the at the beginning of the pandemic, there was a federal mandate for employers to offer leave for employees. It was an expanded family medical leave. And it covered employees if they needed to be home because they were ill or a family member was ill. When that legislation expired, there was an option for employers to continue doing that. And we've taken advantage of that and continued to offer those leave statuses or forms of those leave statuses to our employees out of the interest of their health and well being.
Okay. And then the other things that's listed under that same portion are also really important. And I'm, you know, they're really nice benefits, I think, for our employees to have. So let's see now. All right, where we also met what a hundred, I mean, with ten ninety four and ten ninety five tax reporting requirements that were required for the Affordable Care Act.
Yes.
But that too is a good benefit. All of the benefits that we have in that section are quite nice. And like we were talking about before, that benefit package might really help us to sort of keep some of our employees, even though some of our nurses, for instance, may not be able to make as much money outside of, you know, if they if they stay in the county. Some of these benefits, I think, could be able to sort of keep some people here, draw some in. I think that would be pretty important.
So that may be some of the implications of this report for our work is to consider our benefits package and then continue to look into how we use that to attract and retain our employees.
Yes, right.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaro. Any responses to what Mr. Page highlighted?
Well, I guess I have a question, Mr. Redding, and I I probably should know this. But on your team, do you have people that can go out to the schools and can go out to departments to talk to classified staff about what really what the benefits are? It can be a half an hour meeting in terms of, I I I don't know how long a meeting. It could be to just say, this is what you have. Because I would be willing to bet that there are some some folks at any level, you know, in 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 any of the teachers and administrators in classified who really don't know, you know, and and maybe would not have gone online to look up their benefits. But to have a human being saying they're in front of and and then sticking around after the meeting with for individual questions. This is what you got. You know, this is what this is what we're trying to do for you. And and really bring these to their attention. And maybe that's been done. But I'm I'm going back to the twenty five percent, you know, departure rate and higher, you know, rates on the others. It's just, I think it's 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 communication.
Right.
And so I guess my part of my question for you is, do you have people on your team who can do that?
Yeah, it's a great question. A lot of that education is done at onboarding. And then there are opportunities for employees to attend and ask questions. There's a lot of education shared during open enrollment around our different benefit plans. Some of the opportunities that are available for employees as they're starting to do maybe some financial planning or think about retirement. We do have a benefits administrator that will meet one on one with employees at their request to walk them through what kind of benefits they're eligible for under the Virginia Retirement System. We do offer several different vendors for four oh three B and four fifty seven, which are defined contribution plans similar to like 401K. And those vendors do provide different education opportunities for how to do that pre tax savings through payroll deduction. And that will be enhanced as we go forward, because we'll be entering into an RFP process in the not too not too distant future to secure new vendor services for that. So those are some of the opportunities. A lot of them occur during onboarding and during the open enrollment period every year, though.
I I I see in our emails and and Mr. Page, you probably see this, too, that when Nationwide is coming in for a meeting.
Right.
You know, and and so they're inviting people in. And maybe it goes out to a different group. But I guess I don't see a lot of that for many of our in house things.
Yep.
You know, and you know, maybe people don't know about, I'm I'm just giving examples. Don't know about, you know, the the counseling they can get for their retirement.
Sure.
You know, and 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 other types of things. And so communication by compass is is a good thing, but I'm not, I don't even, sometimes I do see things on compass. And do we have an idea how many people really read? No, no, I don't. And that's sounding negative. I don't mean that. How many people do read Compass? Do we have a feel for that?
I would not be able to answer that. That is coming through the the communications team. So I don't know what kind of metrics we have on that.
Fair enough, fair enough. I was just just looking, wondering, you know, how many people are actually seeing it. So.
Okay, but as we began to expand HR, but one of the new positions, I think, was going to be like a customer. For lack of a better word, maybe a customer rep or, you know, a person who would be available to answer questions or spread information.
Correct. But there's a customer service center, yes.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay, yeah, right. With that person, well, the person, but the staff would have to already know part of this. But with that department be able to, we have like any manuals, you know, any little small handbooks or anything that go out to the employees that would at least list the benefits.
Now, a lot of that is available on the website and available through SharePoint. But a good bit of that will also be part of the service center's work is to set that information up in really clear, easy to navigate self-service information. So that for those who just want to go on the web and find it, they can do that. If they'd rather pick up the phone and call someone or email someone to get an answer, then they'll be able to do that through the service center also.
Okay.
But I think that's definitely an area we can look at is how well are we communicating and getting that, that information out?
Mr. Reading, one, one question for you and, and I know that, that this is a new department and I know that, you know, I mean, things are, how busy is the service center?
Um, it doesn't exist yet. It will exist and we expect it's going to actually be quite busy at first as people are adapting to the new model. But.
No, I, I think it would be and I, and I think the more, you know, you can get out to people.
Yes.
Pick up the phone and call us or email us or chat with us or whatever. You know, we're, we're here to help you.
Yes, agreed.
Have the service reps been brought into place yet or all of it will be sort of gradually happening?
It's going to be a bit of a gradual process as we move into the spring because we are still serving both the school division and the local government. So because we still have obligations to both sides, we have not been able to really reshape our department yet. I think as we head into the spring, I know the, the local government HR is staffing up and they're starting to hire for positions. So we'll be able to begin the transition in the next couple of months, but it won't be complete until July 1.
Okay.
That's another one I should have known and I didn't realize that it was.
All good. All good. Let's see. So within that, is there anything else that you wanted to reflect on in terms of the implications of our work or responding to what either of you have shared?
Okay, the, I think this is still on those pages. Employee recognition and engagement was that? Because I can't see the bottom of on that page. Is that?
You're right. That's part of this. Yes.
Okay, that, that's pretty cool, too. I like that because, um, that would be able to show, I think, our staff that, you know, we really do appreciate them. I think sometimes that's hard to get across. I think given some things that might happen, some people may not realize that we really recognize and appreciate them. So the methods that we have of recognizing and engaging them, I think is pretty important. And that page sort of does a good job of showing us some of those.
Thank you. All right. I want to move us to the next part of the discussion before we go back to the whole group. And that's debriefing this conversation that we've had. So we've unpacked the text and now we have a couple of guiding questions. And they're on the screen. What do we see as a success and what do we see as opportunities? Based on our review, what have you learned about this health or the status, not the physical or medical health, but the, the status of our workforce? How might this information guide the board's decisions when we get to budget time? We're, we're very close to the budget season. And then are there other topics or metrics that you would like to see incorporated into our next annual report? So we're, let's, let's debrief around these four guiding questions.
Well, I'll take number one and that is it, it was apparent reading, reading this. And, and I'm old school, so I've got the hard copy of it. It just, it just.
Me too.
Was easier. And there, there are a lot of things that are successes. You know, in it, whether, you know, whether it's in benefits, whether it's in a service center that's coming, whether it's in a lot of features in it. The opportunity is communication. You know, one of the things that I think is, is a danger for any area of, you know, whether it's human resources or, or anything else is you don't want to be the best kept secret in town. You know, you want everybody to know and over-communication is, is better than under-communication.
Yeah, based on that, I guess, just making sure, I think an opportunity would be to make sure that we could, like John was saying, get the information out to all of our employees. Because sometimes in some of the emails, and this could be just people that we couldn't satisfy to begin with, but quite often there are so many, there are some negative things coming through that would appear to be saying that we don't really let our employees know how much we appreciate them. So I guess we could take care of opportunity and maybe we would have to think of some other ways to of trying to make sure that information gets out about the satisfaction and how much we do appreciate them. Right? I'm not sure how we could do that anymore. But to make sure that it's really a genuine thing that we are doing.
I think one thing along those lines and Graham, please correct me if you think I'm wrong on this. And I'm not suggesting we're doing this, but it's just to be always conscious of not communicating in a thou shalt format. You know, but you know, have you thought about this? Are you aware that we can do this and you can do this? And what the benefits are, you know, for you, not just, I mean, where the benefits of these actions are for you, not just benefit, benefits.
Yeah. I, it is true. To sort of just, you know, straight, yeah, state some of the opportunities that we do have and make people aware of those, but not inside of a, you know, sort of domineering way or sort of stressing maybe negative things. Or at least couldn't be constituted, but still, or in some cases it's hard to do though, because some people would just be negative to begin with. So I'm not sure about how we can always help some of those people.
All right. What have you learned about the, the status of our workforce?
Okay, one thing I've learned is well, the age distribution of it. Uh, and you know, on that graph, it was what, one place where, and I couldn't see the number at the bottom of it, but what was that number for the greatest number? But I'm a sort of surprised by the way how it's almost like a bell, well, a reverse bell curve, you know? Yeah. At both extremes, it's sort of low, but then in the middle, you know, most of our employees are sort of concentrated in that middle portion.
Yeah, the greatest percentage is 16% between 55 and 59. You're talking about the age graph?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, well, then that would have implications too, because that would be meaning that as a group, that pretty large group of people are moving toward retirement. So we'd have to also think about how we can address maybe a pretty large number of retirements possibly in a few years, because like that was a huge number of people.
Right. That, that's true. So thinking about the potential loss of experience, skills and knowledge that would go is that group enters eligibility for retirement.
Just a non-secret question. It gets into where you all are going to recruit people to come in for these positions? You know, I, I, that, we don't need to talk about that now because I know that's not part of this, but I would love to have a conversation with you and the board about that at some point.
It's, it's definitely one of the implications of the report for our work. We do see that wave that you were both just talking about in terms of people that will enter the eligibility period for retirement and the need to then substantially increase our recruiting to fill those gaps in our system. So that is something that is a huge implication for us. How might this guide your decisions as we go into the budget season?
Well, one thing would be to try to be as competitive as we can be with our salaries to make sure that we can attract people in different fields that classify employees. So trying to be as competitive as possible with nurses, but really with all of our classified employees. School bus, bus drivers, secretary's entire shooting match.
Yeah, I think we talked about that a little bit earlier, you know, in terms of you all can, can, can really, and it doesn't have to be done in the next three weeks for this year's budget. But can be the leader in terms of information for us about what the real marketplace is out there that's trying to take away our people and what's important to our people for us to do in order for them to stay. Whether that is money, whether that is benefits, whether that's recognition. You know, you know, I know Graham and I have both been in, in meetings where, you know, bus drivers and building services people are recognized in front of their peers. And they remember that always.
Right.
You know, tomorrow they've got somebody retiring after 28 years as a building consultant. And, and they're having a party for you know, and, and you know, to, to, just to recognize him. And that's something that I'm sure Mr. Gaines will say as he, as he moves on. It was a great place to work. You know, and they took good care of me and I took good care of them.
That's, we want everyone to, to be able to reflect on their time as an employee to, to say that. Right. Are there other topics or metrics that you think we should be incorporating as we move forward in the next annual report?
Speaking just for me, I, I don't know that I've got any to name offhand, but I would sure like to think about that. And maybe, you know, write you and, and copy Graham on. Or maybe we can send you something together.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Right now, I don't know what I'm missing.
I guess one would be more information about how we communicate with, with an employee, you know, various methods of communication. That would be one, but I think, you know, that I'm not sure how much detail could be added to the report about it, but still maybe more information about methods that we use to communicate and how effective those methods appear to be.
Yeah, so metrics around, sorry.
With, with, with your service center.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just, you know, we, we got 1,500 calls in the first year. You know, we got 4,000, you know, five years later. I mean, you know, just that, that's and that's incoming calls.
Right.
Will your, will the service center make outgoing calls as well?
Quite probably they would be some of the people reaching out to contact employees for any information that might be needed or forms that are needed. It would be both receiving and initiating communication. But a piece of that too, one of the things we'll be collecting as we set this up will be customer service metrics. So do our employees feel like they're getting what they need? Are they able to reach us and, and get issues resolved? And in a timely manner. So we'll be definitely gathering data around customer service and sharing that as we move forward.
And sharing, and you know, some of the things that might be coming up. We're sharing some of the things that are brand new. Yeah, so that's great.
And that's something completely new that will be with HR, right? Because right now it's not a component at all.
It's, it's not data we gather right now. And then I think it's just because we're serving so many different audiences with the K-12 as the largest client and then local government and the number of partner agencies. Once that's focused on just schools, we can really, I think, start to gather some data around that.
Okay.
Mr. Ready, thank you. This is very worthwhile.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your, your reflections and your input. They're very helpful to us as we think about our work going forward and we really start to shape the, the department. I think we do actually have about a minute and a half. And I don't know if that's a time where we might want to just take a break for a moment. I'll actually ask Dr. Kaiser. I think she's still on. There she is.
There she is.
Mr. Page, would you like to, we, we just got a real quick, like, debrief from here. So if you'd like, we can take a break or we can keep going.
Okay, we can keep going, I guess.
I'm just going to stand up for a minute. I'll just do it right here.
The other groups should be returning in just a minute.
Okay.
Why are we running so late?
Who? How did you get into our group? Oh, is that the other group coming in?
The other groups are coming back in now.
Right, so, right, so that's it, I guess, right?
Why are we running so late, guys?
Right on time.
We've been done for 15 minutes.
Oh, really?
It was supposed to be 45 minutes and we started, started at 7:10 and now it's 8:15.
Forty-five plus 15. It was an hour.
And it's 8:15 now.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go on and get wrapping this up so we can be all back on, on schedule. I know that each of the groups had the opportunity to discuss a couple of different topics. Obviously, the, the group in the main room, we've been having the opportunity to hear you. So what I'd like to do is just take a couple of minutes for each group to kind of debrief. Since we, we did have topics, just kind of thinking about these guiding questions. If somebody from each group would be willing to just share out a couple of the, the thoughts that you all had around some of these.
Okay, John, are you want to speak for our group?
Um, I'll start and then you can wrap up.
Okay.
And we, we had classified and, you know, in looking at a lot of the numbers, we noticed trends going upward in terms of retirement. We noticed the retention rate. We were losing 23 and a half percent of our, our people. And that's kind of the, the trend that's been in the last few years. But then as we, as we went in, we talked about the exit surveys and, and, you know, saw a pretty decent sized number in terms of dissatisfaction with policies and practices. And a lot of what we, we talked about with Mr. Reading was the why's and, and how this is getting measured and what kind of listening is, is, is going on. And ways to highlight what we are offering that, that could help us with the retention. And I think the, the, the number one word that we, we kept coming back to was communication. And communication with our staff to find out what was good for them, what was not so good for them, what What we had for them, how we could help them. And we learned a lot about some of the upcoming structure. In in the HR department and and a willingness to. To discuss the things we we talked about and to embrace many of them.
The only thing that I can add to what you were saying is. The benefits package that out classified that our staff has available. And so. We were really impressed, you know, with some of the things in the in the benefit package. And wanted to make sure that maybe all of our employees were aware of all of those benefits. So like Jono was saying, a better way of probably communicating. Or making sure that all of the employees are really aware of all of the benefits.
Thank you so much. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr.
I was just gonna say, both of us were really appreciative of Mr. Reading's. Willingness to listen and to clarify things we were saying when we weren't saying them to in such a clarified manner.
True.
Thank you. If somebody from one of the other groups would like to jump in and share some of your all thoughts. Maybe.
I can jump in from.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lee.
We had Kate, Elizabeth and Dr. Kaiser in our group, and we had a robust discussion and I may. Miss some of the points, so Kate and Elizabeth, please feel free to jump in. So we were looking at administrators in particular and. We talked about the. Building up of administrators, nurturing them. And that was typically seen, like that was mostly seen as a good thing. But with a caution that when you look at the demographics of the administrators. How completely different they are from both the teachers and classified demographics. Where mostly you're seeing like seventy two, seventy three percent of teachers and classified staff, seventy seven percent. Are women, but only fifty three percent of the administrators are women, so the question is, okay, so who is getting nurtured and brought up? Into the. To be administrators. The other question is the percentage of administrators who are internal. And for the information that we have, it looks like about seventy two percent of the administrative changes that happened in that year that was captured. Were internal, so promotions or transfers and then the other eighteen, twenty eight percent. Just doing quick math. Were external and so we're a school division that is really looking to make big changes. In some of the, you know. In equitable outcomes that we've seen. And I I think that it can be hard sometimes to do that with so much of internal churn of the same. Sort of people, so that was just a concern that was brought up. We also had good discussions about substitutes and the support that we're providing with them and. It was encouraging to see that they're a part of the big HR plan. So we're very happy to see that and because they're a very important part of our ecosystem as we see more and more. And then we talked about. How important it is to have the experience of teachers of color, but also we were interested in having, knowing more about the experiences of all. Employees of color. And especially since we as an organization have a lot of like microclimates, so. You know, different schools might have different, I mean, certainly they do have have different climates and different experiences for people of color. And then, oh, we talked about our ongoing challenges for being able to pay our teachers and classified staff.
Thank you. All right, um, next group.
Yeah, our group, I'm not sure what our number was, but um, we talked about the recruitment selection and retention for teachers. I want to thank Mr. Brody, Mr. Downs for answering so many questions. Very patient with all the questions that I had, I appreciate that. Also appreciate Mr. Oberg for following the rules and doing the assignment. We talked about, he explained a lot about the RIF and how that worked and how the net, how that net balances out. We talked about alignment with values and people staying and not staying. We also talked about how it's really not only just about money. But the conditions. And I I think David and I are are very. Inclined to halt on new initiatives and new new things that take up space in people's head. Just want to give them some time to get back to doing their regular job without piling on new stuff. What else on that, David?
I think you summarized it totally appropriately.
Okay.
Especially the fact that I did my homework and I participated fully and I want credit for that, Dr. Collins and Mr. Kaiser.
Yeah, he followed the rules and every answer answered every question. We we also talked about soliciting feedback, we talked something, I have a note about soliciting feedback. So. Talked about why new teachers might leave some. And a whole early contract and how that might be beneficial to helping us acquire more teachers of color.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of you for your participation in this. I know that it's a very different format than what we've usually done in the presentation of the of their annual report, but we're hoping that by digging a little bit deeper into it. And through the conversations that you all were really able to kind of get a deeper sense and take that deeper dive into the work that that we we work. To do in human resources. Going forward, Mr. Reading, if you could just share the last slide, thank you. Going forward, obviously, we are going to continue to focus on that objective of attracting, developing and retaining the. Highest quality staff across the division, not just in in one group of employees that we have. Obviously, the the some of the places that we're going to focus, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on talent. And really kind of thinking about the the who we're hiring and how we're working with them and continuing our our focus around diversity and equity measures as well. We're going to focus on processes and in that, I know there was a lot of conversation around in in our group around compensation and benefits and. And some of the things that we do for employees to to help keep them here and so that will continue to be a focus as well. And partnerships is a big piece too, whether it's partnerships of working side by side or with or better communication with our. Employees at across the division or with our internal, our external stakeholders. That allow them to see that Albemarle County is a is a place that they really want to work, that that is really a key to recruitment for us. And finally, it sounds like each of the groups had a little bit of conversation around the restructure of human resources. And we are really excited as we move towards that. Whether we're talking about the the structures that will allow for us to better do some of this work. Or the systems that we'll have in place to also support that work. I think that all that coming together will really allow us to really position us to be the highest quality human resources department that we can be. And we're we're very excited about the work moving forward. And obviously, we will continue to to report to the board some of those changes as we as we move to make that transition. So we do want to thank you for your time tonight and and thank you for for the digging into our human resources annual report.
Thank you, Dr. Casa, Dr. Claire Casa, Dr. Daphne Casa, Mr. Downs and Mr. Reading for your presentation. We really appreciate. The information that you presented to the board tonight, so thanks so much. We will now have an update on the Croze Elementary redistricting study. And we will need board action on this item, so Dr. McLaughlin is going to lead this portion of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Page, and good evening, board members. My name is Patrick McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And I'm here tonight to request that you take action on the redistricting decision for the expansion of Croze Elementary School. So as you know, this process began way back in August with a charge from the board and the formation of the redistricting advisory committee. The committee was has completed their work and made a recommendation to Dr. Haas, which was shared with you in December. A public hearing was held at the last board meeting and tonight we hope to conclude this process with board action. Once we have a final decision from the board, transition activities will begin to take place between the two schools. And our new boundaries will go into effect at the start of the next school year. So construction of the new addition is well underway. And to provide a bit of background on the expansion. In twenty nineteen, the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee recommended that Croze be expanded to accommodate capacity conflicts at both Croze Elementary. And Brownsville Elementary School. Since two thousand eight, you can see that the student population of Brownsville has grown significantly and and is expected to continue to grow. And plan new development in the area is high and the population is forecast to grow more rapidly than in other parts of the county. The recommendation to expand Croze was approved through the capital improvement planning process. This addition will add seventeen classrooms and additional support spaces. Other improvements include HVAC systems, including the county's first geothermal system. Renovations to existing portions of the building and site improvements, and I'm happy to say that all work is on track to be completed for the opening of school. In August. So in December, Dr. Haas accepted the recommendation of the committee and forwarded it to you without any modifications. And the final recommendation to the board was what we dubbed scenario two point two. That scenario moves two hundred and nineteen current Brownsville students to Croze Elementary School next year. And using the current enrollment numbers, this would shift the Croze population to five hundred and twenty nine students and the Brownsville population. To five hundred and seventeen students. So in addition to the decision on adopting these new boundaries. We requested the board consider whether or not to allow current fourth grade students at Brownsville to stay at the school if they've been impacted by redistricting. And to provide a bit of historical perspective, I'll share with you the board decisions on our last two redistrictings. In twenty eighteen, in the Woodbrook redistricting, you allowed current, the board allowed current fourth grade students and their siblings to remain at this current school for one year. Transportation was provided for students who elected to remain. And in twenty thirteen, for the Agner Hurt redistricting, the board allowed current fourth grade students and their siblings to remain at the current school for one year. But transportation was not provided for students who elected to remain there. To help with that decision, this slide shows the current number of students who would be moving from Brownsville to Croze Elementary School by grade level. The current fourth graders on this slide are your rising fifth graders, they would be the one who may be given, who could potentially be given the option to stay and there's thirty six. Students in that grade. On the chart below that, you see the total number of students who are siblings of those thirty six students at Brownsville. That's a total of twelve students, so it brings the grand total up to forty eight students who could possibly stay. At Brownsville Elementary School for one more year. So to conclude, staff's final recommendation to the board would be to approve the superintendent's recommendation, excuse me. To adopt the new attendance zones in scenario two point two, which would take effect in the twenty two, twenty three school year. And to allow current Brownsville fourth grade students and their siblings to remain at Brownsville during the twenty two, twenty three school year only. We would also recommend that transportation not be provided. I think we're all aware of the challenges of the pandemic has had on transportation at our current schools. And providing additional routes next year for students to remain at Brownsville, we feel just would not be practicable. And so that is the recommendation that we are asking you to consider taking action on tonight. And I'll turn things over to the board for any discussion or questions.
Patrick, can you can you just bring up the map for two point two again?
Sure can, yep. There you go, and Mr. Oberg, that comprises the neighborhoods of Gray Rock. Waylands Grant and Bargaman Park and this larger area of Western Ridge, Wickham Pond, oops, sorry, I thought it was sharing, but it's not. So is it coming through now?
Yeah.
Yes, great, great, so that comprises the neighborhoods of Gray Rock here, number one, Waylands Grant and Bargaman Park. Number two, and Western Ridge, Wickham Pond, that also has some additional neighborhoods in there, I think Foothill Crossing is one of the newer ones. That's over there, but that whole area that we've dubbed Western Ridge, Wickham Pond.
So there are no islands being created?
That is correct, there are, there are no islands, there was one scenario that we put before the advisory committee that had an island there. And that was outside of the the guiding principles that were provided by the board and that one was not moved forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. McLaughlin, our most recent redistricting was for Woodbrook and I know we permitted. The same sort of recommendation about. Fourth grade students. What, how many actually took that option? My recollection, it was rather small.
Dr. If, I'm sorry, I do not have that number in front of me. My anecdotally, I can, my recall is that it was small as well, but I apologize for not having that information for you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments related to this item? Okay, if not, could we have a motion related to the recommendation?
I move that the board approved the boundary changes as received in the superintendent's recommendation. And that these changes, including. Grandfathering fourth graders at. Brownsville Elementary School for one year be implemented for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year.
With their siblings, Jono.
I don't know that we've talked about that and I just realized that I forgot to include in that that there be no transportation, so I can restate that. And then and then we can do the discussion, I guess. So I I move that the board approved the boundary changes as received in the superintendent's recommendation. And that these changes, including in the grandfathering of. Fourth graders at Brownsville Elementary with no transportation provided. Be implemented for the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year.
You forgot the siblings.
Well, no, I I thought maybe we could, we could get a second and then we could discuss that and amend the motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved that we accept scenario two point two. And that we allow fourth graders to stay at Brownsville for one year. Without transportation.
I would like to 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 move to amend that motion to add siblings should be allowed to. Attend if their fourth grader decides to stay at Brownsville.
I agree.
Okay. Alright, so is there any discussion on the amendment or on the motion? Could we vote on this consensus that we vote on the two together that it'd be sort of a merge motion?
Sure, do you want me to restate it?
Alright, yes.
You need to withdraw your motion, Jono, and then.
I withdraw my previous motion and I just lost. The verbiage that I was I was hoping to have.
Does that help?
Let me come back to the Zoom. Yes, oh, that's great, absolutely. I move that the board approved the superintendent's recommendation. To adopt the new attendance zones in scenario two dot two to take effect in the. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year and that we allow the current. Brownsville fourth grade students and their siblings to remain at Brownsville during the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year only. No, with no transportation provided.
It's been moved by Mr. Al Carroll, second by Mr. Over. That we adopt scenario two point two, that we allow fourth graders and their siblings to. Remain at Brownsville for one year without transportation. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call a roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne? Yes. Sir Al Caro?
Yes.
Throberg?
Yes.
Your page?
Yes.
Motion care.
Listen, Karis, thank you. We are now ready for other business by board members or the superintendent. Is there any other business or my attention tonight?
I just want to thank the school board for for voting to support our recommendation for redistricting. I want to thank Dr. McLaughlin for his leadership through the process and all the committee members that devoted considerable amount of time and effort. And put, really put a lot of their heart into the work to come to that decision, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. Any other school board business? All right, so again, thank you, Dr. Casa and your staff for the work session tonight. And our board members for approving the redistricting for Brownsville. So our January twenty seventh meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Take care.
Happy Lunar New Year, everybody.